Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the January 13th Williamson County Commissioner Meeting. As a reminder, please silence your cellphones during the duration of the meeting. First item on our agenda is always the invocation and pledge delivered tonight by District 11. The invocation will be given by myself, the pledge will be given by Commissioner Ilo. Please rise.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and for all your many blessings. Thank you for this time we have to come together as a commission to make the decisions that affect this county. We ask for your wisdom and guidance as we make those decisions. We also ask that you keep a watchful eye on those who watch over us, our first responders, our soldiers, men and women in uniform, both abroad and here. And we ask also, Father, that you watch over those on both coasts that are dealing with disasters. Give them relief and mercy as they go through their time in repairing their lives and building it all back together again. We ask all these things in your holy and precious name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in peace, with liberty and justice for all. Next item on our agenda is roll call. If...
We have 22 present, two absent. Commissioner Matt Williams and Commissioner Chris Richards absent.
Next, we have approval of the minutes.
Each of you, if I can get a motion on the screen. I've got a motion by Commissioner Tonicalip, seconded by Commissioner Torres. If you're in favor of approving the minutes, please signify by pressing your yes button. Oh, I'm sorry. We have a question from Commissioner Herbert.
There is a correction, and I forgot what my paper I sent. It's on the very first resolution. Said it was sponsored by me. It wasn't. It was sponsored by Chris Richards.
Make sure the minutes reflect that correction. Any other corrections or adjustments or questions?
Yes, I just wanted to call out, there was two resolutions that I had changed my vote to. The Clerk Whitby, and he fixed those. It was 11/24/1, I believe, 11/24/15. So I just wanted to make sure that anybody that was keeping track knew those were correct and in the minutes.
That correction also. Any others? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor of approval of the minutes, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed or no? Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
22 yes, zero no.
Motion passes. Next, we have Citizen Communications. However, no one signed up to speak this evening. So we move on to Communications and Messages. A few of those. One, we have a late filed resolution, and without objection, we will read it at the end. That is Resolution 12524. It should be on your desk. Then I have a question or a comment from Commissioner Webb.
Mr. Chair, we request that we pull Resolution 12513. We'll bring that back at a later date.
Okay, we will pull Resolution 12513. And then the only other item I have under Communications and Messages is a request of each of you to email both myself and Diane.
On your choice, this year, the budget meeting falls on Juneteenth, which is June 19th, and that is a county-wide holiday. And so our rules dictate that we have to have that meeting the following day. So your choices are whether to do that at the normal 6:00 PM timeframe that we would normally meet in the evenings, or what we have done for the budget is meet in the morning. And that would be a 9:00 AM call time for each of you. You don't have to decide now, and we don't have to debate now. I would like each of you to send me and Diane a personal email with your choice. Again, this is for June. Regularly scheduled June 19th budget meeting to be held instead on Friday, the 20th, at your choice of either 9:00 AM start time or a 6:00 PM start time. Please email those to me within seven days. Within the next seven days if you can, so we can get all the notices out and make sure that all the directors are informed accordingly. Have a question or a comment from Commissioner Clifford.
So, the Leadership Franklin Program is something that the City of Franklin does every year by folks that are nominated and chosen. And tonight, we have several members of Leadership Franklin here participating. Part of what they have to do is participate in a government meeting, and they chose our county commission meeting to come tonight. So I just wanted them to stand and be recognized as part of the Leadership Franklin Program in participating here with us tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Clifford. That is an excellent program, and I thank those individuals for being here tonight. And then I have a question or comment from Commissioner Petty.
Is this the time to make a comment about the reports?
Which reports?
The reports that we have. Oh, okay. I wasn't sure. All right. I'm new at this. I'm trying to figure out what the order of things are.
That's coming up next. Any other questions or comments before we move on to reports?
Say again?
Oh, yes, yes, yes. What number is that? Oh, yeah. And I'm sorry, one other message under Communications and Messages. There is a resolution that was incorrectly filed under appropriations. It should have been filed or was intended to be filed under the consent agenda. And so if there are no objections... Under Other, Resolution 102516 will be moved to the Consent Agenda. Are there any objections to that? Seeing none, we'll move that to its proper place under the Consent Agenda. Next item on the agenda is Reports of County Offices. Mayor Rogers Anderson.
Give a shout out, a thank you to the Emergency Management, Public Safety, Highway Department for having a weekend that was full of snow and getting it removed and done it in a very professional manner. And oftentimes, these men and women that work in these different areas do not always get the recognition, but thank you for allowing me to say that. This time, I'll call upon Phoebe to give us a snapshot of the reports.
Thank you, Mary Anderson. Good evening. On December 5th, the county issued two bonds, one general obligation bond in the amount of $56,330,000 and one county district bond in the amount of $20,785,000. Please record in the minutes that the report on the debt obligation for both of these issues are included in your packet and have been presented for your review. Both bonds were sold at a premium, which reflects the additional amount investors were willing to pay upfront and allowing us to reduce the amount of the bond issue in the face of the bond that we had to go into debt for. In other words, we have resized that bond so that we have borrowed less, still receiving the amount of funds we needed in order to meet the needs of both the county and the school bonds in which were approved by the commission. I do need to point out that the general obligation bond does include $20 million for the JJJ project. If you recall, there were two resolutions authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds. And one included the resolution for a not to exceed $280 million for the JJ project to be issued in one or more series. As we discussed back in September, it was never our intent to issue that bond in one issue, but rather to break that up based on the progress of the project, the JJJ project, and the need for funding and to issue those bonds as the need arose. And this is the case with our most recent bond issue, and we did only bond 20 million, which is why there may be a little bit different if you're looking at those resolutions, why the numbers do not add up exactly. We did issue bonds less than what you had approved in those resolutions authorizing us to do so. Our education impact fee generated a little over $1.5 million for the month of November, bringing our total available for allocation up to $86.3 million. The commission did approve to use, back in November, $480,000 to help offset the cost of purchasing new buses, which related to growth in the special education programs and that side of the education programs. The check was issued in January, which is why you do not see it on the report, reducing that amount, but it will be reflected in the January report. That money has been drawn from the education impact fee and paid over to the schools in order for them to move forward with that purchase of the buses. The county did receive profits in both the months of October and November from the Cool Springs Conference Center. In the month of October, we received $93,087. The month of November was $39,260 worth of profits. Privilege tax monthly total collections for the month of November was $897,254.05. We won't forget that one. This is slightly less than what we have received in privilege tax for the last few months, but it is holding steady. We have been normally ranging around $1 million, plus or minus. So we are holding steady there. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to take those at this time.
Thank you, Phoebe, for that clarification on the debt obligation. So I guess the only question I have, are we going to be issuing any further bond debt for this year? Do we foresee?
No. That is not our intent this time. The only thing we would look at if something came up unexpectedly, but no. Our intent is just to go to issuing once a year.
Okay. So do you have the numbers on like what the impact is going to be on our debt service yet?
Let's see here. Our net increase of debt, based on what we just issued in December, the amounts that we are anticipating or will be paying in principal payments for the month, we do not start paying those until April, May, and June, but the net of those two will be $27,155,000. So that will be the net increase into our total debt.
And so our total, how does that impact our budget for debt service for this? It won't impact it this year.
The only thing it will impact for this year is we'll do a resolution later in the year to offset the difference for the interest that will be coming due in six months. As far as principal payments, nothing will be reflected until next budget fiscal year.
Okay. And next budget fiscal year, we'll probably see an increase of the 27, or that's just an increase on our debt?
That's just the net increase of your debt.
Okay. So then, the impact on our, I guess, our debt service for next year, do we kind of have that number yet?
I do not, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question from Commissioner Steve Smith.
Mr. Chairman, Phoebe, what interest rate did we get?
Oh, my apologies. Both were a little under four. Let me see what those numbers were. So for our general obligation, our general obligation, our true interest cost was 3.6378, and our county district was 3.628.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the underwriters discount, and for the $56 million one, it's $81,000, but for the $20 million one, it's $145,000. And I just wondered, is that typical? That you have such wide variance in the cost of the discount?
So the underwriters discount is calculated based on the price in which those security, the security companies purchase our bonds, and then the amount they are able to resell. So that may fluctuate depending on their resale value when they turn around and sell those to public. So they take ours and resell those. So there may be, underwriters discount may fluctuate based on if they already have a buyer for those bonds or not. So some of that is, fluctuates based on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes everything. I'll entertain any questions you may have.
Any questions for the mayor? I see none. Next, we have School Report, Superintendent Schools, Mr. Jason Golden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Commissioners. I would like to actually echo the mayor's comments about emergency management and managing the snow. We happen to be having a principals' meeting over at the EMA Building on Thursday as the weather issues were coming in. EMA allowed me to sit in on one of their conversations with the National Weather Service as we were making decisions on Friday. So it's really good to see that teamwork that we have with all aspects of county government. We have one item on your agenda. It's not an appropriations item. It's just part of the capital, five-year capital plan that county government does. One question came up from Commissioner Herbert at the Budget Committee, and she said something to the effect of, you don't have any appropriations items, and they're becoming more rare. And my response was something along the lines of, well, it's because our enrollment is stabilized. So I actually looked up our enrollment from end of first month, which is our main tracking date for each school year, which is usually late August, to today. We have grown by 129 students since end of first month, but that's a relatively small growth compared to what we experienced in years past. So we're quite stable. So that is the reason why we're bringing fewer appropriations items to you in the middle of the budget. Doesn't completely eliminate them, but it does eliminate some that we may have brought to you in years past. So we're actually pleased with the stabilization of our numbers. It's long-term. We feel like that's going to be a good thing. Certainly open any questions you all may have.
I have a couple of questions. The first is from Commissioner Lawrence.
Good evening, Jason. A question about the privilege tax report that I ask occasionally, but it may be relevant to the resolution we have coming up later about the privilege tax. So one of the things that, if you notice, about the privilege tax on our reports is we don't get all of those funds. Those funds are dispersed to the various municipalities according to the law and how they should be distributed. So we don't have total control over all of those funds, which is why I said that's relevant to our discussion later. But one of the things I like to ask occasionally is, all these funds that are going out to these municipalities, and it's substantial, are we seeing those dollars coming back to the schools for various projects in those municipalities?
It varies a little bit, to answer your question. And we have had discussions over the years with some municipalities about some of their infrastructure work that actually might help us, whether it's traffic signalization, that kind of thing. I will tell you specifically, the City of Brentwood gifts to our schools, money, they've been doing it for many years. And the decisions for those gifts are made by our principals. They report to the City of Brentwood what they do. The window of time that the City of Brentwood makes those gifts, they actually also have some nonprofit entities who receive some gifts as part of their budget. For example, there might be a few thousand dollars that our principals use to buy interactive boards or some kind of technology, that kind of thing. So we do get a little bit of that from them over time. I don't have a written report for you about that. Occasionally, we get some in-kind help. As an example, there have been times where Spring Hill has waived tap fees when we've done new construction. So there might not be a one-to-one that we can point to, but we do have good relationships with those municipalities as well.
So how does it work with the other municipalities? You say Brentwood gives us, gifts us the money. How do you, does Franklin gift money? Does Spring Hill? Do we have to go to them and ask for the funds, or do they offer it to us?
We have not gotten any, you know, I was answering your question about specific funds from municipality. The one I can recall is the City of Brentwood and their regular gifting. Some of the other municipalities, I can't speak to any particular fund that they actually distribute directly to us. We'll do a double check on that, but as I stand there, I can't recall any. But there are some other things that they might help with here and there for infrastructure issues. But by and large, as I understand it, they do have that authority and responsibility to use those funds as their long-term projections dictate.
Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you, Jason.
Yes, sir. Next question is from Commissioner Sturgeon.
Hey, Jason. Hey, real quick question. You were talking about enrollment, and that there's 120 new students since, what, September?
Yeah, August, it's end of first month, which is somewhere around maybe August 29th, August 30th.
Are those pre-K or K through 12?
129 total new students during the school year since the end of first month. It's a mix. It's every grade level scattered across the county. I will tell you, generally speaking, we see a little bit more emphasis in the growth areas. The Nolan'sville area, traditionally in the last couple of years, we've seen some growth during the course of the year.
So it does include pre-K?
It would include pre-K. Now, when we speak to pre-K, let me be clear, we have different terminology. There is voluntary pre-K, and then there is what we call early childhood, which is pre-K for students with disabilities plus peers. When a child reaches the age of three, a parent can, the day that child reaches the age of three, enroll their child in our schools if that child has a qualifying disability. And so we do, from time to time, have those children enrolled during the school year. So it's...
I'm just curious how much, because it used to be you reported enrollment K through 12.
Yes.
And then in the last year or so, you've started adding in the pre-K and early learning. And I'm, in my mind, I'm trying to compare apples to apples. So how much is the effect of adding in early learning in, in pre-K?
Well, number one, we've actually been sharing those numbers for years. I do, I would emphasize to you as Commissioners that when you look at enrollment numbers, you really need to double-check on that question. We have somewhere around 650 to 800 early childhood, pre-K students over the course of the years, somewhere in that range.
So out of the 129?
I'm sorry.
What percent of the 129 would I expect to be in that category?
It would be negligible, but I can't give you an exact number.
All right. That answers my question. Thank you.
Any other questions for Superintendent Golden? I see none.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Hospital Report. CEO Phil Mazuka and Mike Genesey, if they're here. Is there anyone here from the hospital? Rachel Farmer? All right, we'll move on then. Any other departments wishing to report at this time? I see none. So we'll move on to elections and appointments. The first...
Four-year terms expiring on 1/29. Terms... Terms expiring are Josh Hughes, Ron Crutcher, Glenn Adams. Nominations are Josh Hughes, Ron Crutcher, and Glenn Adams. I have a proper motion made by Commissioner Duffy, seconded by Commissioner Horton. Any questions or comments on these nominations?
Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, they are loaded, so we'll vote by our screens. If you're in favor of those nominations, press your yes button. Any opposed or no? Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
22 yes, zero no.
Nominations are accepted. Next, we have the Judicial Commissioners. One of 26, they both loaded together? Both loaded together, so we'll vote on both of these. We have a nomination for Laura Letts and a nomination for Whitney Waddell. Any questions or comments on those nominations? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, I have a proper motion, sorry, made by Commissioner Duffy and seconded by Commissioner Steve Smith. If you're in favor of those nominations, press your yes button. Any opposed or no? Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
22 yes, zero no.
Nominations are accepted. Next item on the agenda...
I'll entertain a motion by way of stream. Proper motion made by Commissioner Duffy, seconded by Commissioner Tonicalip. And again, for our Communications and Messages, the road list is now in the Consent Agenda, that being Resolution 16. Any questions or comments on the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor of accepting the Consent Agenda, signify by pressing your yes button.
Any opposed or no? Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
22 yes, zero no.
Motion passes. There's no unfinished business, so we move on now to appropriations in our first resolution.
Resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into a grant contract with the Tennessee State Library and Archives on behalf of the Williamson County Library in appropriating and amending the 2425 library budget by $10,393. Proper motion made by Commissioner Steve Smith, seconded by Commissioner Paul Webb. Library Board was 7-4, 0 against. Budget Committee was 4-4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Webb.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a technology grant. We get very often from the state of Tennessee. Note that that does require matching funds, which are budgeted. And if we have any other questions, the Director of the Library is in the audience to answer questions.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, indicate by pressing your yes button. Any opposed or no? Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote. Sorry. It shows you voted. Did you have a question?
I didn't. I was trying to change my vote.
Oh.
I did not vote no. I voted yes. So if you can change that, my thing would not change. My thing would not change.
Gotcha. Twenty-two yes, zero no.
All right. Resolution passes. Resolution 1, 25...
Resolution appropriating and amending the local health services grant agreement with the state of Tennessee Department of Health and increasing the 2425 Health Department budget by $67,300, revenues to come from the state of Tennessee.
Public health was 4-4, 0 against. Budget Committee was 4-4, 0 against. I have a proper motion by Commissioner Paul Webb, seconded by Commissioner Steve Smith. Explanation, please, Commissioner Webb.
This is an amended grant contract agreement, bringing this up to the total of $1,267,500. Ms. Montgomery is here, if we have any questions.
Any questions or comments? I have a question from Commissioner Petty.
I was just wondering, is this a grant that we get every year? I mean, this pays for a lot of salaries and other kinds of stuff like that, so, a little new at this, so I'm not sure.
Yes, Commissioner, this is a grant that we do get every year. It is a contract, a cost reimbursement contract between the state of Tennessee and Williamson County.
Okay, so there's no danger this thing coming to an end sometime in the next few years?
This actual increase is to cover the 2% increase that the county commission approved for employees to get their salary increases effective in January.
Okay, now, we have a price down here, it looks like, for the right to grants, for $3,000. Does that happen every year? Do we have to write a grant for this, or how does that work?
No, sir. No, sir. This is just a contract that's executed between the county and the state.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed or no? Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-two yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 1, 25-3, resolution...
...and appropriating and amending the 2425 Animal Center budget by $9,625.77, revenues to come from donations. Proper motion made by Commissioner Sturgeon, seconded by Commissioner Tonaclyff. Public health was 4-4, 0 against. Budget Committee was 4-4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Webb.
As you can see in the resolution, these are donations, the Park family, the friends of the Williamson County Animal Center, and Mutt Nation, as well as the Franklin Noon Rotary made donations to the Williamson County Animal Center. Ms. Johnson is here, if anyone has any questions.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed or no? Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-two yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 1, 25...
...resolution appropriating and amending the 2425...
Parks and Recreation budget by $138,000, revenues to come from unappropriated county general funds. Proper motion made by Commissioner Steve Smith, seconded by Commissioner Paul Webb. Parks and Rec Committee was 4-4, 1 against. Budget Committee was 4 in favor, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Webb.
As you can see from the resolution, this is to replace the original seating in the Art Satorium, if I'm pronouncing that right. And if you haven't been to the College Grove Art Satorium, you ought to go. That is a very nice facility that county has. And so, as you can see here, this is the original seating. I'm sure Parks and Rec is here, so, the director here, if anybody has any questions.
I do have a question from Commissioner Mary Smith.
Actually, a couple of things. First of all, my church had been attending there, so I was asked to make sure I vote my conscience on this particular one. I am in support of replacing those seats. As somebody who's gone there regularly over the last year or so, I will say that I've snagged enough clothes that it is time to replace those seats. I did have a question, though, for Gordon. I just wanted to get clarification on the amount of seating, because there was, I guess somebody brought to my attention that there might have been a decrease just because of ADA complacency, and that also there was probably some floor repairs that were included in this 138,000.
I'm not aware, Commissioner, about any other, you know, floor repairs or loss of seats. You know, from my understanding from staff, is that it's just a seat-for-seat replacement. And in anything that might be damaged during the course of taking the seats out, putting new seats in, we feel like we've got capable staff employed in our department that can take care of that.
Okay, and so this will go out for bid, an RFP, or do we already have a vendor?
No, we're able to buy these off of the purchasing boards that we have available to us as county government. And so, we did check prices, excuse me, but the price that we're getting is the best price that we can get.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? I see none. And if there are none, if you are ready to vote and you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed or no? Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Commissioner Hayes? Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-two yes, zero no.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 1, 25-5, resolution authorizing the Williamson County mayor to enter into a grant contract with the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation and appropriating and amending the 2425 Parks and Recreation budget by $75,000, revenues to come from grant funds. Proper motion made by Commissioner Tonaclyff, seconded by Commissioner Sanford. Property Committee was 5-4, 0 against. Parks and Rec was 5-4, 0 against. Budget Committee was 4-4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Hayes.
Yes, so the county has received grant funds in the amount of 75,000 from the Department of Environment and Conservation to fund a brownfield investigation about the use of the Bending Chestnut and Gregory Park areas. And Gordon, I'm sure you can explain this far better than I can, but I know the Bending Chestnut was to determine what we, how we can use that property, correct? Or is it to clean up? I can't recall. There's several...
Commissioner, what these brownfield grants are for is to determine whether or not there's any contamination on-site as a result of outside debris, water coming in from certain places. In the case of Bending Chestnut, because I-840 has bridges over the property, unfortunately, we have people that use it as a dumping ground. And they just dump it straight off the interstate down into the park, and there are streams and everything else down there. So, this brownfield grant will determine if there is any contamination from that unauthorized dumping of materials.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions or comments? Question from Commissioner or comment from Commissioner Clifford?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be abstaining just because I'm a director in the Department of Environment and Conservation, just so there's no appearance of infidelity.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed or no? Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-one yes, one abstain.
Resolution passes. Resolution 1, 25...
Resolution appropriating and amending the 2425 Parks and Recreation budget by $179,964.49, revenues to come from donations. Proper motion made by Commissioner Sanford and seconded by Commissioner Tonaclyff. Parks and Recreation was 5-4, 0 against. Budget Committee was 4-4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Webb.
Again, Mr. Chair, this is donations which will be covering some expenses and improvements to our recreation service. Any specific questions can be directed at Mr. Hampton.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed or no? Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-two yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 1, 25-7, resolution accepting donations on behalf of the Veterans Treatment Court and appropriating and amending the 2425 Williamson County General Sessions Court budget by $4,103, revenues to come from donations. Proper motion made by Commissioner Sturgeon, seconded by Commissioner Torres. Law enforcement and public safety was 4-4, 0 against. Budget Committee was 4-4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Mason.
Thank you. This is a donation that was received for the Veterans Treatment Program.
Any questions or comments? Commissioner Mary Smith?
Just a quick comment. I had the opportunity in December to actually attend one of the graduations for the Veterans Treatment Court, and I would suggest to all the commissioners, if you have the opportunity to do that, to see how that program works. It's well worth your time, and I really enjoyed it, and I appreciate Ms. McKenney and everything that her team does for these veterans. It's a pretty awesome thing that the county does.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed or no? Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-two yes, zero no.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 1, 25-8, resolution accepting a donation of $3,000 for the purchase of equipment and supplies for the Williamson County Sheriff's Office and appropriating and amending the 2425 Williamson County Sheriff's Office budget by $3,000, revenues to come from donations. Proper motion made by Commissioner O'Neill, seconded by Commissioner Hayes. Budget Committee was 4-4, 0 against, as amended. Explanation, please, Commissioner Webb.
As you can see here, Mr. Chair, this is a donation of $3,000, and there is an amendment at the lower part of this resolution, so I think we're going to submit the amendment. Is that correct?
I believe so.
We have the emotion to accept the amendment as written at the bottom of Resolution 1, 25-8.
Proper motion from Commissioner Webb. Do I have a second?
Sorry.
Seconded by Commissioner Lawrence. And... Okay.
It's not loaded.
It's not loaded, so we will voice vote for the amendment. First, I'll ask if there are any questions or comments about the amendment. Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor of the amendment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The amendment passes, and we're back to the full resolution.
So, Mr. Chair, if any questions, Sheriff is here to answer them.
Any questions or comments on the resolution as amended? Seeing none?
I hold up, because now they're saying as amended, so just give them a second.
They're loading it now as amended.
And when that is loaded, if you're ready to vote, then signify...
If you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed or no? Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-two yes, one abstain.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 1, 25-9, resolution appropriating and amending the 2425 Sheriff's Office and Benefits Budget by $1,582,155.18.
I think the last one, it should have been 22 yes, 2 absent? I think one...
They showed up.
One absent.
Oh. Hello.
They snuck in on you.
Okay.
We're now, we're now only down one, Commissioner.
Okay.
So, again, Resolution 1, 25-9, resolution appropriating and amending the 2425 Sheriff's Office and Benefits Budget by $1,582,155.18 to provide funding for and additional staffing needs. Revenues to come from unappropriated county general funds. Proper motion made by Commissioner O'Neill, seconded by Commissioner Hayes. Human Resources Committee was 4-4, 0 against. Law enforcement was 4-4, 0 against. Budget Committee was 3-4, 1 against, as amended. Explanation, please, Commissioner Mason.
Thank you. This is for funding for additional positions within the Sheriff's Department. The funding would cover their salaries as well as any equipment, uniforms, wear and tear, gasoline used for vehicles.
And we do have an amendment of Commissioner Herbert.
Sheriff Hughes, please. Sheriff, you know, I've already drilled you on this, and I'm the one that voted no, but I'm going to drill you some more.
Okay.
Because my concern is approving positions in the middle of the year. We usually do not do that, you know, to try to keep the budget right. That makes you a total of 19 positions this year, I mean, 18 positions this year.
Eighteen positions. That's correct.
Why do you need so many positions? That's a lot of positions.
Well, I guess the short answer is, there's been no additional staffing added since 2018, is my understanding. Now, in that time, the population in the county has gone up, our response times have gone up, crime has gone up, and we've got to grow this department to maintain the level of service that the citizens expect and deserve in Williamson County.
And part of my concern is five of these positions are what I call management positions.
Not all five of them, but yes, they're scattered throughout the organization. I'm going to a, to a, an organizational structure that will expand across the organization and give us a greater span of control, more accountability throughout the organization. We've, historically, our organizational chart has went up through one person to the sheriff. I can't recall, it might have been Sheriff Headley that had the first deputy chief. I'm not sure who, which sheriff that was. But that's been many years ago, decades ago. And we're an agency now of 350, and we need more accountability in our, in our organization. It's simply more than one person can do alone. I've went the, pretty much the bulk of this year without filling some of these command positions throughout the organization until I could better assess what the needs of the organizations were. And so, I haven't filled Mark Elrod's position since September. Other command-level positions throughout the organization, I wanted to make sure that I knew what the needs were before I came to y'all and asked for that. So, even though I knew we needed additional staffing, I didn't know how that needed to be spread across the organization. And I explained that during the budget meetings prior to this fiscal year coming into effect, that these would be, these positions would be allocated based on the needs of the organization. And just to reiterate what I stated at the committee meeting, this wasn't my idea to come to y'all in mid-budget and ask for these additional positions. I asked for these positions prior to this fiscal year, and I'm back here now at y'all's, or at y'all's direction. And actually, I think Mayor Anderson may have suggested that, and that, and that's why I'm back before you now, is that was what I was directed to do.
Next question is, how many positions are you planning on asking for in July?
I don't plan to ask for any additional positions.
You feel like this will be it for you?
Well, I think every other year, we need to assess that. I don't think it's something that we need to come to you every year on. But as the county grows, and we need to look at the unincorporated areas particularly, and we need to look at the needs of what, what the county citizens' expectations are and what our crime looks like as we move into the future. We want to continue to provide the same level of service that they're expecting and that we're delivering now. We don't want to go backwards, we want to go forward. And to do that, we've got to grow this organization to maintain with the growth throughout the county.
And back to this issue we discussed at Thompson Station, are you going to have a discussion with the mayor of Thompson Station about their creating a police force since every other city has one?
I already have. I actually met with the mayor, and I believe it's their city administrator, it's been a couple of months ago, and I recommended that we increase the fee that they pay to us by 100%. So, I think that that is more than reasonable going into the next fiscal year, that we ask to double what they have traditionally been paying us, and they seem amenable to that.
Okay, thank you. My only comment is, when you increase the budget by this much, that does affect the tax rate. So, when you do vote for this, you are kind of voting for a tax increase, and it's just up to each commissioner on how they feel about tax increases.
Well, I understand it. It's the cost of doing business, and it's the cost of public safety. And I think that we have a great emphasis that we owe that obligation to the citizens of Williamson County. They need to, they need to feel safe in the county where they live, work, and play. And I think that there's, there's no way, there's not a better way that we can spend our money than doing that, doing just that, just trying to protect them.
Okay, Sheriff Hughes, thank you.
Thank you.
A few questions, Sheriff, if you don't mind standing at the podium. Commissioner Hayes is up first.
Hi, Sheriff, how are you? I know you've had a lot of focus groups internally with your, with your staff and your deputies, is that correct?
That's correct.
And then you've also talked with many inside and outside, I guess, your agency. So, I just want to say thank you for the time and the attention you've taken to really assess the organization, because you're correct. We all, this is, I hear this very frequently, I want to feel safe. We have illegal immigration, which is on everyone's mind, very top of our mind. We have illegal immigration, which is on everyone's mind, very top of our mind. Do we have gangs here, et cetera? We all know we have gangs here, but what are they doing? And are we safe? So, thank you very much for taking the time and really looking at how you can best serve the people that serve under you and serve us every day, because I appreciate it, and you've got a great group, and we don't want to lose any of them.
Thank you.
So, thank you, I support those.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mary Smith. I'm sorry, Commissioner Greg Lawrence is up first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Sheriff.
Good evening.
Just a question. Commissioner Thompson Station, the doubling of the fee, what are they paying us now?
125 is what they paid us in the current fiscal year.
So, that's going to 250?
To 250.
In your opinion, is that enough money to cover the cost?
Well, I think generally speaking, that that would about pay for the cost of one deputy. So, if you consider that a zone, and is it enough? I mean, there's no way they could provide that level of protection for that cost. But the reality is, whether they pay us that, or whether they pay us nothing at all, we've still got to provide the coverage. So, I think it's more than fair that we double it, 100% is, I think, adequate in the first year, and then we need to reassess it going forward. I know it's their desire to have a police department, it's very costly, and so, you know, to that extent, they've been getting a bargain, and I think they're ready to step up to the plate and play more. I did have a conversation with Kristi Borden, who is here also, and Kristi, would you mind coming forward just for a second? Kristi was telling me today, and I'm going to let her, I don't want to put words in her mouth, but she was giving me some interesting information today as it relates to how many of our calls are, or how much of our time is spent in Thompson Station. Do you have that off the top of your head?
Yes, it was around, it was around 13.9%. Connor Scott's here today also, and he's had conversations with them as well. Most of the agencies that we serve pay into dispatch fees as well. So, we're assessing that to look at the overall for that. So, Thompson Station was at 13.9% of the overall Williamson County Sheriff's Department call volume.
And to that point, they actually put a cost on their service for a dispatcher. And so, it's something that I hadn't really considered from the Sheriff's Office, because they're their own entity, and do you have that cost? Do you know what that is off the top of your head?
For Thompson Station, we haven't come up with an exact cost yet. That's what, we were starting that today. I was researching by looking at stats today. But if we take the Sheriff's Office as a whole, we put them as a blank number of around $256,000, about five dispatchers at around 2471 costs per dispatcher to keep 24/7 coverage for the Sheriff's Office. So, we need to assess what that looks like for maybe a little piece of that for Thompson Station, because it's not the whole, but a piece of that does, it does impact Thompson Station and dispatch fees that should come to the dispatch center.
I bring her up just because I think it is important that we need to remember that we also are drawing from dispatch resources for Thompson Station, and I think that's important to consider as well.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Mary Smith.
Well, two items. First of all, Sheriff Hughes, I appreciate the time and effort you've put into figuring out the best structure for your organization to make sure that the folks in our county are kept safe. So, I really, I know you've put a lot of work into this, and so, I just want to say I appreciate you and your team putting the effort for it. In my opinion, law enforcement is the top of what the role of the government is supposed to do, so if we're going to look for cost savings, public safety and law enforcement's not really probably where I want to start. But I do understand, you know, we do want to be good stewards with tax dollars.
Absolutely.
But I would imagine our taxpayers would also agree with me, so I want to support you. I do note that there was a negotiation during the Budget Committee meeting, and we did propose an amendment to eliminate the need for the vehicles and related equipment for this particular resolution. So, I'd like to go ahead and introduce that amendment, if I could, make an emotional amend, and it would take the amount down from the 1.582, 155.18 to $785,655.18. So, that would be the proposed amendment.
And I believe that amendment is on everyone's desk. Looks like this. And I do have a proper motion for that amendment. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Lawrence. Now, any questions or comments will be directed towards the amendment. And my first on the board is Commissioner Sturgeon. On the amendment, or?
Yeah, I was in the board meeting. At the Budget Committee meeting, so I don't understand the car situation and how that would impact you to take the cars out of the resolution. And I do want to add...
It's a timing thing. So, by reducing the proposed amount, we're basically pushing that off to sometime in the future, because if you approve of that now, which was funded out of the fund balance, likely we're not going to replace those before July anyway. Number one, we're not at full staff. We're closer now than we've been in a long time.
Which is what I wanted to bring up. Historically, before you became sheriff, we were short 80, 90 people?
I don't have those numbers. I was told this time last year, we were down about 60, and as of last week, we're down 17 across the entire organization, that's civilians and sworn.
Well, I want, I just want to applaud you.
Well, thank you.
Because we were short for an extended period of time.
Thank you.
And I think you coming and filling this position has been the solution to that problem, so...
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that.
Appreciate it.
So, you don't need the cars right away?
Correct.
You're hoping to get them in the next budget year?
That's correct. I think that we've got enough on our plate now that we can equip the deputies that we have and carry us well into the next fiscal year.
How's the lead time on ordering cars?
Captain, you want to come up and address that? Captain Rodney King is over fleet, and he can address that.
Commissioner, what was your question again?
What's the lead time on ordering cars? Like, it's not something that takes like fire truck lead time?
I ordered 12. I ordered the first batch of cars in the end of December. They're going to start building them in the middle of January, and they're saying eight to 10 weeks to have them on the floor, which is another month and a half to get them upbitted with all the equipment. So, you're looking at May, June, before you even see any on the street.
Okay, so, six months.
So, about six months. Five to six months.
So, if you get approval in July, is six months work for, it does?
This year's money didn't get released as the, didn't get released till December.
Right.
So, we could actually order cars.
Well, I'm thinking about the cars in this resolution.
Yes.
So, Jeff's saying if they order them in July, getting them by December works for his operations.
December, January, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Mason, on the amendment?
No, not on the amendment.
Okay, I'll come back to you. Commissioner Hester, on the amendment?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Sturgeon addressed some of my concerns with school buses. We have mileage stipulations, maintenance stipulations from the state of Tennessee. Do we have any of those stipulations from the state of Tennessee for sheriff's vehicles?
Not to my knowledge.
Do you have any sheriff's vehicles that really need to go to the recycling center to wherever?
We are doing a comprehensive review of our vehicle fleet. We're actually meeting tomorrow on that. Since transferring Captain King over to the Fleet Services Division, we have done a comprehensive review of our inventory, and we've looked at the mileage, and we looked at the maintenance cost, and we're trying to determine which of those vehicles truly need to be surplus and which ones we can push out, like to the SRO Division, where they're not driving them as much, they're just parking them at the school to go to and from, and so, they're not used like a road deputy would use those vehicles. So, to your question, I think we're doing pretty good, actually. We've obviously got some vehicles that are getting closer to the 100,000 mile mark, and so, we want to be sure that when we put vehicles out there on the street, and we're responding emergency traffic, that they're safe, not only for the deputies that are driving them, but for the motoring, from the motorists throughout our county that are traveling our roadways.
Thank you. I wanted to also ask about patrols. Are we going to have more officers on the roads patrolling?
That's my plan.
That is...
If you recall, my primary goal was to make sure that we had an SRO in every school every day, all day. That was my campaign coming in, and I'm happy to report that that is actually happening, and we are at full, actually, we're not at full staff. I think we're two deputies short in SRO. And I had a certified police officer call me today, and he's putting in his application tonight, so we're all but at full staff in the SRO Division. My next priority is patrol. High visibility deters crime.
Yes, sir. Well, I do appreciate all the work that you have done.
Thank you.
This is a lot of information about cost and cost analysis and conferences with different municipalities. Is it possible to park one of these much older vehicles at a school, just to park it there as a, as a reference for individuals who are contemplating crime at the school?
I think that's a great strategic idea, not only at schools, but at businesses or in the public in general, provided that we don't have equipment that is subject to vandalism or theft. We've got to be cautious of that, because we have computer equipment in there, we have radar equipment in there, in some cases, we have weapons in there, so we've got to be, we've got to be cautious that we do put vehicles out there that have been stripped, if you will, and still provide that level of deterrent. I think that is a strategy that is used by many law enforcement agencies across the state and across the country, and I think it's effective.
Thanks.
So, thank you for that.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Commissioner Williams, on the amendment?
Jeff, is there a fleet management software that we utilize with our vehicles?
There will be. There's not now. We currently, I built an Excel spreadsheet, and there was a spreadsheet. I couldn't really, I couldn't do a lot with it. Captain King came in, and he and I got together, and we created something that was much more user-friendly. It's in an Excel format, but I'm very familiar with how you set up a vehicle retention schedule over an infinite period of time, push it out 20 years, if you will, and that's what I want to get to. I want to get it to the point where we can have something where we know every year going into the year, how many vehicles do we truly need? How many can be pushed out to the next fiscal year? How many of them maybe need to be replaced a little sooner? But to have something that we can project out long-term, and that's something that Captain King and I are working on, and we're actually looking at a software, we're looking at mini softwares, but that's one of the softwares we're looking at, is an inventory software for the fleet management.
Yeah, I'd highly recommend, in my civilian job, I've worked with several companies that do fleet management. There's a number of variables and parameters you can build into it and get efficient in how you do it. I would probably recommend that your organization has probably become sophisticated and large enough that it warrants having a formal software that manages it for you.
Undoubtedly.
And it's everything from scheduling oil changes to, you know, drivers every single day can go in and put their inputs onto it, so it's actively, proactively managing the fleet. If, yeah, if you guys could, I would encourage y'all to bring back some information after you have a chance to investigate and see some demos, get some costs associated with it, but I think your organization's at the point that we need to become a little more sophisticated in our management fleet.
One of the things you brought up that I think is important is that we capture that mileage periodically, and that's one thing a software will do. Well, right now, you know, we enter our mileage when we fuel up, but there's no way to capture that data, there's no way to run a report on that data, and so, unless you actually solicit that data from the deputy that's driving the car, or you go out and physically look at that car, there's no way to continually monitor that from a maintenance standpoint. Oil change is the same way, so there's a ton of benefit, and when you've got the size fleet that we've got, it's imperative that we have some kind of software to keep up with that.
Yeah, I'd be happy to talk with you afterwards on a few different systems I'm familiar with, so...
Fantastic. Thank you.
Any other questions on the amendment? Seeing none, if we're ready to vote on the amendment, and again, the amendment is to reduce the funding request for operational expenditures to $785,655.18, which excludes the capital expenditures that would have been the vehicles. If you're ready to vote and you're in favor of that amendment, signify by pressing your yes button. If you're opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-three yes, zero no.
The amendment passes. We're back to the full resolution as amended. I'll go first to Ms. Mason, if she still has a question or comment.
I do, yes. So, I am in support of this resolution, Sheriff, because I want you to build your department the way you think it needs to be managed, because I want us to have the best officers in the best position to succeed. But by saying that, I want the entire commission to also realize that this isn't an isolated expense that we're talking about, because what eventually will happen as our population continues to grow, and as we attract better and more qualified officers, and we get our officers paid where they need to be paid, which is something we're going to have to address as well, is our officer compensation package. So, when you look at those expenses, plus as the officer's out on the road, the population grows, we have additional arrests. Well, when people get arrested, they come to court, and right now, we are maxed out in the court. So, you're looking at potentially a new general sessions judge, you're looking at additional clerks. So, all of this is a result of growth, and it's not a bad thing, but it is a result of growth, it's a result of population. So, when you look at this measure, realize that this isn't an isolated conversation. This is a conversation that we are going to continue to have, and you're going to see, I guarantee, people coming asking for more court personnel, for more court transport officers or court security, and those are conversations that we just need to continue to have. And so, I do think that this is a good resolution, because again, I want the Williamson County Sheriff's Department to be the premier law enforcement agency in Williamson County, and the only way we're going to get there is by putting the right people in the right positions and also compensating our people who are putting their lives on the line for us every day. So, thank you.
Commissioner Webb?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do want to point out, to confirm the Sheriff is correct, last year, when we were doing the budget, we asked him to defer these positions. That was one of the things that we did in order to avoid a property tax increase last year. You can't continue kicking the can down the road. So, in HR, which I'm chairing this year, just want to note that a full year of these officers will run you about $1,003,000, and they, like everyone else, is subject to inflation. This current inflation is 2.7%. We don't know what it's going to be the next week, but the economic data I've received just today is that wage growth in the United States is 3.9%, and our budget guidelines are 4%. So, we're right in line with that. So, as you heard earlier, not only approving this, but looking at what we've do with our staff. The sheriff officers are not going to do their runs if there's nobody payroll to process the payroll. I mean, every position in the county is important. Quality of life was mentioned, so that includes recreational services, obviously, our education, the best public education in the state. So, there's a lot of pressure on this, this budget that's coming up. So, to those of you who are on the Budget Committee, you're probably going to have a rough job going through this, but we have a great county, and we have great people, and we can keep it that way. But I want to make you aware of what I told the Budget and HR Committee the other night. We can't continue kicking the can down the road. So, these positions, which I voted in favor of, we voted four, zero on the HR Committee, but just to let you know, there's not enough revenue for these officers and give our staff a pay raise. That was confirmed last week by Ms. Farmer and Ms. Riley. When they looked at the growth projections of revenue, it's not enough to cover the growth. And that includes turning the lights on in this building, putting gas in the patrol cars, everything. You've got to consider everything. If you run a small business or any business, you know inflation, and these people that we're talking about tonight, paying rent and buying groceries is the key thing. So, I'm just making the point, we ought to do this tonight and support these deputies, but we've got to figure out a way for the richest county in the Southeast, maybe in America, to pay for it, be responsible. So, that's what I'm saying. So, Mr. Chair, I'm in favor of this. I think this is a great job, just a comment. When I was growing up, living in a law enforcement household, we didn't get this kind of love. We, the police officers and highway patrol, were kind of at the low end of the feeding trough, and I remember that, especially on the city side. So, I'm glad that this community is backing law enforcement at all levels, and I do think Brentwood is still the premier agency in the county, Sheriff. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Commissioner Petty.
Both comments, both of Commissioner Webb and Mason, I think that's a concern we all have to look at. I mean, the cost of everything is going up. There's no question about that. And we are growing, so that's a reality. But what I wanted to mention was, it's not just the number of people you hire, it's the quality of people you hire. And I've had the privilege to get to know one of your deputies fairly well recently. And I'm so impressed with that person, the quality, the experience that he brings to the table, what he's doing in your organization. And so I just commend you. Like I say, it's not just bodies, it's the quality of the bodies. And you are getting some really, really good people.
Commissioner Sturgeon.
I'll make it quick. I just want to let you know also, I can definitely tell you that the residents in District Eight have witnessed an increase in crime. And it's at the forefront of, I literally have a conversation about suspicious activity or crimes committed every day of the week, seven days a week. So there's, we have to get on top of this. Things are changing, the demographics are changing, the Venezuelan gangs are changing. And we need to make sure you have all the resources that you need.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on Resolution 125-9 as amended? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote. If you're in favor of the resolution as amended, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-three yes, one no.
Resolution passes. Before we move on to the next resolution, and only because this is our first meeting that is held under the new start time, I do see that Williamson County Medical Center CEO Phil Mazuka and Mike Genese are here. If there are no objections, and only if there are no objections from my fellow commissioners, I will invite them to the podium to give their hospital report. Do I have any objections from our commissioners? I see none. If you're prepared to give that report, Mr. Mazuka, Mr. Genese, we'd love to have you.
Well, we apologize for being on the old time.
It's okay.
From now on, we'll know it's at six o'clock.
Appreciate you having us up to give you that update.
Really quickly, on a project update, we opened our new NICU on December 16th. So that was really the last phase of this major project. We went from eight beds to nine beds. And we moved from basically a ward setting to their own little private, what's called bays because of the size of the room, but their own private rooms. All new equipment, all state of the art. And it was in good time because we ended up using all those beds in the month of December, as we saw respiratory issues go up. So we will continue on to raise funding to our foundation. When we have additional funding raised, we'll go ahead and start the renovation of the existing facility. But for now, we'll be on pause, probably for about a year. I do want to say that December really started off as a very busy month to end the year. Respiratory illness came in later this year than it was in 2023. In 2023, we saw it come in in October. This year, it didn't really come until December, and we really got busy then. As you know, we had a snow event this last weekend. And I just want to tell you how proud I am of the staff. We asked our staff members, knowing the snow was coming, for those that would stay overnight, we used the old beds in the old facility. And we used them all. And so we had a significant number of staff members stay. They don't get paid for staying. They stayed overnight just to make sure they were there for the snow event the next day and for the weekend. So I'm really proud of those people. And we had a lot of people come in, drove in that Friday morning when it was snowing very hard. So we didn't have any downtime. Everything ran really well for the hospital and EMS service. So just wanted to mention that. With that, I'll turn it over to Mike for November financials.
Thank you, Phil, and I apologize as well. We'll be here on time next time. You probably thought I was playing hooky because I have bad numbers to report. But they are what they are, guys. You know, we're a stat-driven business, just like many are. And Phil just mentioned, you know, we didn't have the flu. And we just had some really low stats in November. And I went back a little while ago and looked at it. And, you know, we looked at the key stats. And you can see on the report that I do, almost everything is a negative number from the average. But I went back and I looked at where we stood. And our admissions were down 11% from budget. And that was the lowest in the last 12 months. At the same time, you know, we just finished December. And December had the highest admissions we've had in the last 12 months. So adjusted admissions were down 5%. They were the second lowest for the month. December, we had the highest adjusted admissions. Same thing in patient surgeries, down 20% from budget, lowest in 12 months. Second highest, we're in December. Total surgeries, the second lowest, the highest in December. So we're in this, you know, we really, really, I guess, an anomaly. And it used to be that we felt pretty comfortable that October, November, December, that we have a lot of elective surgical procedures, the non-emergent ones. But I think what's happening is that, you know, these high deductible health plans are kind of skewing that. So patients really don't have that ability to afford these things like they used to because they used to meet their deductibles. Well, nowadays, they're really never meeting their deductibles. They're always assuming a part of that risk share. So when the stats are low, obviously, the net revenue is going to be low. And that's what happened here. You know, we had about $28 million in net revenue on a budget about 29.5. Our operating expenses are pretty much flat. And they are just about every month, it seems like. We try to flex them, and we do our best to flex our staffing down. 65% of our operating expenses are salaries. Probably like the police department, too. It's very, very difficult for us to find healthcare workers. So we can flex, but we can only flex so much. If we flexed them all down, you know, in December being the highest month of almost all of our statistics, it would have been extremely challenging for us. So as you can see, we did miss our budget. We missed our budget by $891,000, unfortunately. We did generate some cash, though. In fact, we collected more cash than it looks like. Almost $28 million in collections versus 31 the month before. But we only had 20 collection days in November. Where October, we had 23 days. So collections per day were higher than that. We grew a day of cash, which was a good thing. And we met our debt coverage ratio. So our debt coverage ratio, if you call it 1.5 or 1.99. So while we did not have a strong November, we closed our month of December. We already have the numbers, and we met our budget for December. So, yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hester.
Over Christmas, I had a nasty case of COVID. So I did not want to go to the emergency room, but I did. And it was wonderful as far as staff is concerned, as far as facility is concerned, as far as care. I don't recommend going back to the emergency room at any level, but I had to go. So thank you, gentlemen. Thank you to your staff. Everyone was wonderful. And I didn't tell them I was a county commissioner. I just, I just went and got better. Thank you.
I appreciate that. And, you know, we weren't the only ones that were down. We, I talked to my peers, and November was that anomaly throughout, not only just our region, but throughout much of the United States. November was down. October was strong. We had a great October, if you recall, and a great December. So it was just a very odd, very odd fall, the way it worked. So, any questions?
Any questions or comments for Mr. Mazuka or Mr. Genese? I see none.
Thank you again. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you both, gentlemen. All right, we'll jump back into appropriations. And our next resolution is 125-10. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2425 Sheriff's Office budget by $4,500, revenues to come from opioid abatement funds. Proper motion made by Commissioner Lisa Hayes, seconded by Commissioner Betsy Hester. Opioid Task Force was six in favor, zero against. Law enforcement was four in favor, zero against. Budget Committee was four in favor, zero against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Mason.
This is exactly as the title states. We're receiving $4,500 from the opioid abatement settlement funds.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-three yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 125-11. Resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to execute agreements with certain organizations, providing opioid remediation and abatement services and appropriating funds for those services. Appropriations to come from opioid abatement funds. Proper motion made by Commissioner Steve Smith, seconded by Commissioner Drew Torres. The opioid task force was six in favor, zero against. Budget Committee was four in favor, zero against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Webb.
I think you'll see from looking at this resolution, this is expending the opioid settlements. I would ask if there's any questions that someone on the opioid task force is better able to answer than I am.
Any questions or comments? I have a question from Commissioner Bill Petty.
I just wondered, I'm new here, so I don't know how this thing all began. But this is, is this money going to continue for a long period of time? Or is there an end time for this? Or, I think some of the money comes from a suit, doesn't it?
We have, the different settlements have different lengths of time. The original settlement with the big three was a 12-year settlement. We've had additional settlements that have ranged from eight to 10 years. But we should have somewhere in the nine-to-10-year range of more money coming in on an annual basis under the settlement. It is still possible that additional settlements with other distributors or retailers could be added to that. So it could go longer, but it shouldn't go any shorter.
Yeah. So I'm just curious, we have EduCare, the Refuge Center, Resolve Diagnostics. How were those entities chosen? And is there some follow-up? Do we get reports from them so we know how things are going and what's really happening there?
Commissioner, let me ask Sarah to answer your questions. Kind of give you a snapshot of it and the way that it's done today as opposed to the way we started.
Sarah.
Hello, commissioners. So this is the Task Force Grant Program. So we take the opioid, the Task Force takes the fines received from the settlements and gives them to organizations in the community to do opioid abatement services. In the past, the Task Force reviewed the applications themselves. This time, we contracted with MTSU, their Office of Prevention Science and Recovery. That was a contract you all approved, I believe, back in May. And they have expertise in this area. They helped draft the RFP that went out. And then they reviewed the applications we received and scored them based on a set criteria. Then they presented those to the Task Force, who reviewed them, had discussion. For some applications, they asked the organizations for additional information. And then a resolution came through in November with the first set of recipients that they recommended, and that was approved. This is three organizations that the Task Force requested additional information from the organizations. Kathy Montgomery from the Task Force met with the organizations, got more information, kind of came up with a budget that worked for everyone. And then that went back to the Task Force, and they voted to approve that.
Okay. Yeah, I just asked that question because I know this is all being recorded. And there's a lot of people in the county that don't really understand how this stuff works. And sometimes it's a good idea to get an extra explanation. That's kind of why I asked, though. Thank you.
Commissioner Sturgeon, you still have a question? Okay. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-three yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Next, Resolution 125-12. Resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to initiate a request for proposals from qualified organizations into contract for the provisions of a study to determine the effect of increasing the adequate facilities tax and what that effect may have on the education impact fee rate, revenues to come from unappropriated county general fund balance. I do have a proper motion from Commissioner Lisa Hayes and a second from Commissioner Streser. And I'm going to go now to Commissioner Mary Smith.
Yes, since this was a resolution that Commissioner Richards had introduced, I was wondering if I could make a motion to defer it so he could be here next month and be able to answer any questions.
And I do know that that was Commissioner Richards' wishes. Do you have a proper motion to defer this to next month? Do I hear a second? Seconded by Commissioner Tunncliff, Sturgeon, and a few others. So that resolution is now deferred to next month. Do we still vote on it? Yeah, sorry. Has that been loaded, or do we need a voice vote? Okay, we'll do a voice vote on that. If you're in favor of deferring this resolution until February? Oh, it is loaded. All right, I hear it's loaded. So if you're in favor of deferring the resolution, press your yes button. If you're opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-two yes, one no.
Resolution is deferred to February. Next, Resolution 125-14. Resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into a grant contract with the United States Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, and amending the 2425th Sheriff's Office budget by $10,692. Proper motion made by Commissioner Mary Smith, seconded by Commissioner Drew Torres. A law enforcement was four-four-zero against. Budget Committee was three-four-zero against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Mason.
Thank you. This is a grant that we have received from the Department of Justice.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby. Resolution passes. Resolution 125-15. Resolution amending the five-year capital improvement program for schools, roads, fire protection, and recreation. Proper motion made by Commissioner Aiello, seconded by Commissioner Mary Smith. The school board was four-four, school board, yeah, four-four-zero against. Law enforcement.
He didn't do Resolution 13, he skipped one.
Is that one that we pulled?
Four was 13. 13 was pulled.
13 was pulled?
Yeah.
Why?
Wasn't that the one that was put into?
It's a sheriff's office grant. 13.
I've got 13 being the EMA one.
Okay, UASAC grant. But why is it pulled?
Commissioner Webb pulled it at the beginning.
Oh, my bad.
Yeah. Commissioner Webb, you had pulled number 13, correct, at the beginning of the meeting? Yeah.
Yeah.
And that was Resolution 13. Okay, back to Resolution 125-15. Again, resolution amending the five-year capital improvement program for schools, roads, fire protection, and recreation. And I already have the motion and the second. Are those recorded, Mr. Whitby? Or do I need to re-announce the, you still have the previous motion?
Smith and Aiello, yes.
The original was Smith and Aiello, Mary Smith and Aiello. School board was four-four-zero against. Law enforcement was four-four-zero against. Highway Commission was four-four-zero against. Education Committee was five-four-one against. Parks and Recreation was four-four, four in favor, zero against, with one abstention. Budget Committee was three-four-zero against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Aiello.
Yeah, this is just the five-year capital.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote. No, the button's not on the screen. Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Commissioner Petty.
I was just curious. It's been pointed out, this is kind of a wish list. I think everybody agrees that that's the case. But what I was told, and I think I understand, is that we have to do these in order to get some kind of grant money or something. Am I mistaken? We're required to do this every year or periodically?
We are actually required, as part of our private act, for us to be able to collect the privileged tax monies. So that's why we do that. Because our privileged tax monies are to go towards fire, Parks and Recreation, schools. Those things, obviously, are the reason why those particular departments, five-year CIP is coming before you this evening.
Okay, so that's the requirement?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, good. Thank you, appreciate it.
Commissioner Mary Smith?
Yes, I just kind of wanted to repeat some of the Yes, I just kind of wanted to repeat some of the discussion that happened during the Budget Committee. So as Phoebe just clarified, this is basically just kind of a, here's the things that we are seeing as far as each department, the capital improvements that we want. And Mr. Mosley was kind enough to share with me the private act, the actual requirement within the private act that requires us to do this. I think the issue we have is, Commissioners, is that this does get published, and then our constituents look at this and say, oh, well, I'm going to get a school in three years, and you know, these things. So they, I did suggest, and I would like to see us maybe come up with a better tool, that, you know, something we can really kind of put out there and say, this is what we're doing. But I do understand the requirement, and that this is just part of us being compliant with the act. So I just wanted to repeat that.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed or no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Commissioner Webb?
Yes.
Just got to hit it harder.
Yes.
Can we voice, record Commissioner Webb as a yes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-three yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 12517, Resolution Authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to Enter into an Interlocal Agreement with the Murray County Emergency Communications District and the Williamson County Emergency Communications District. Proper motion made by Commissioner Mary Smith, seconded by?
Miss 16.
Oh, I'm sorry. 16 was?
16 was on the consent agenda.
Let's change to the consent agenda.
Well, they had 16 up there on the, they had it up there.
Oh, did they? Okay. So the motions are from Commissioner Greg Sanford and seconded by Commissioner David O'Neill. The law enforcement committee was four, four, zero against. Budget Committee was three, four, zero against. Explanation please. Commissioner Mason.
Thank you. This is to enter into an interlocal agreement with the Murray County Emergency Communication District and our emergency communications district to provide emergency 911 call answering. And I believe it's required that we do this. In case our lines were to go down, we have an agreement that they would pick it up.
Indeed. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, and you're in favor of the resolution, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed or no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Commissioner Webb, wish to voice vote?
Yes.
Record, Commissioner Webb as a yes vote, and record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-three yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 12518, Resolution Authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to Enter into an Interlocal Agreement with Murray County Emergency Communications District and the Williamson County Emergency Communications District for the Temporary Transfer of 911 Calls. Proper motion made by Commissioner Lisa Hayes, seconded by Commissioner Greg Sanford. The law enforcement committee was four, four, zero against. Budget Committee was three, four, zero against. Explanation please. Commissioner Mason.
This is similar to the last resolution, but I think it's in reverse, that we will cover for them.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're in favor of the resolution, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed or no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Paul Webb is a yes vote. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-three yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 12519, Resolution Authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to Execute a Real Estate Sale and Purchase Agreement to Purchase Real Property on Fernville Road. Proper motion made by Commissioner Sturgeon, seconded by Commissioner Mary Smith. Public Safety Law Enforcement was four, four, zero against. Budget Committee was three, four, zero against. Explanation please. Commissioner Mason.
Thank you. We had a long discussion about this purchase of property. The goal is to get fire coverage as close to the Fernville area as possible. Given just the lay of the land, the proximity to the city of Fairview, this seems to be the best option that we have to get our foot in the door in that area. There's also a structure, I believe, already on the property that would be great to be revised and used. So it's to purchase it for a new fire station to serve that area.
Any questions or comments? Question from Commissioner Petty.
Who negotiates these contracts? I mean, how are they negotiated? And, I mean, I'm just not sure. It seems like a lot of money for that three-and-a-half acre or something like that. Just curious.
Thank you. A question, Commissioner, on a couple of things. So we were able to negotiate $5,000 off the asking price. So we were able to work with them a little bit, but this was essentially the going rate in that area. One of the comparisons that we looked at was a one-acre parcel across the street that recently sold for $100,000. So we're paying for land that includes the garage on it, so there are improvements to it. So, and working through our conversations with the real estate agents and with legal, of course, we determined that this was a reasonable price to pay. We would love to pay less. We are always looking for people who are willing to donate land to a fire service, but this seemed to be a good deal for what we needed it for.
I understand. I thank you for that. I'm just, again, this is, you know, a public meeting, and people that watch this can give me a little more understanding of what went on. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Mary Smith?
Hi. I just had a quick, follow-up question, because we discussed in this Budget Committee, and you said that there was existing structures on, will we be able to use those structures for the fire protection? So maybe that will offset any additional capital that we'd have to spend to build a station?
We do plan to retrofit that structure. It's basically a large garage. We believe we would need to pour a new concrete floor, put in bay doors, and you'll see in the capital improvement plan that you just voted on, that we have set aside, I think it's $400,000 for improvements to that structure specifically. As it sits now, we may be able to use it for some purposes, but certainly ideally, we'd be able to do some more modifications to it. But it's certainly less expensive than building a brand-new structure from scratch. So we're trying to be creative and use the structure on the property in a beneficial way that does save money, but also gets us an operational building.
Appreciate that.
Commissioner Webb?
We're working on my machine.
Okay, that's not a true, all right. Any other questions or comments? I see none. And seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor of the resolution, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed or no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Commissioner Webb? There we go. We got all of them. All right. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-three yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 12520, Resolution Authorizing the Conveyance and Trade of Two-Way Radios Owned by Williamson County to the Town of Nolansville for a 2022 mobile home. Proper motion made by Commissioner Greg Sanford and seconded by Commissioner David O'Neill. Law enforcement was four, four, zero against. Property Committee was five, four, zero against. Budget Committee was three, four, zero against. Explanation please. Commissioner Hayes.
Yeah, so essentially, this is us trading literally two-way radios that are owned by Williamson County that Nolansville has been using for quite some time, and we're basically just trading it for a 2022 mobile home. So, and it ended up, I think it was, I can't recall the conversations. It's been a few weeks, but it ended up being a really fair deal. So, any questions?
And there's an inventory report that's on each of your desks that goes along with this resolution. Any questions or comments on the resolution? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed or no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-three yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 12521, Resolution Accepting a Conditional Donation of a Certified Narcotics Detection K9 from Brad and Amy Phan on behalf of the Williamson County Sheriff's Office. Proper motion made by Commissioner David O'Neill, seconded by Commissioner Greg Sanford, and I believe we have that special guest here with us.
Oh, gee.
Law enforcement was four, four, zero against. Property Committee was five, four, zero against. Explanation please. Commissioner Hayes.
Yeah, so we received a generous donation, a conditional donation of a canine detection dog. And I can't, he can steal the show. Let the dog steal the show. Way cuter than me.
Sheriff, what can you tell us about this donation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Deputy Amy Phan and is Brad back here? So these, this is the couple that donated this dog. They're actually both employed by the Williamson County Sheriff's Office. And Amy, why don't you tell us a little bit about Nala?
Nala is a two-year-old Belgian Malinois, and I'm an SRO at Independence High School. And so she would just go to work with me every day, just to add another tool to our belt and help him keep our streets and schools safe.
And I will note that this narcotics dog ran straight to Allen Sims upon entering the room. I don't know.
If you need to back up a little bit.
How, how well-trained that, any, any questions or comments? Looks like I do have a question from Commissioner Herbert.
Ask Amy if they could stay a little bit after so we could see the dog. We've only got about two more resolutions.
As long as you don't mind kisses and wanting to be loved on. So she's a little different than our other ones, so. That's all she wants, is to come play with everybody.
She's a beautiful animal. Thank you for bringing her. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor of Resolution 12521, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed or no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-three yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 12522, Resolution Appropriating a New Peer Support Specialist Position for the Williamson County Veterans Treatment Court. Proper motion made by Commissioner David O'Neill and seconded by Commissioner Mary Smith. Law enforcement was four, four, zero against. Budget Committee was three, four, zero against. Explanation please. Commissioner Mason.
Thank you. This is a grant position or grant funding that would provide for a peer support specialist position for the Veterans Treatment Court. We did put in there that should the funds for the grant expire or terminate, there is no guarantee that this position would be, continue to be fulfilled.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor of the resolution, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed or no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-three yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 12523, Resolution Authorizing and Approving the Execution and Delivery of a Sublease Agreement with Franklin Web Printing Company, Inc., for the Lease of Office Space for the Sheriff's Office. Proper motion made by Commissioner David O'Neill and seconded by Commissioner Greg Sanford. Law enforcement was four, four, zero against. Budget Committee was three, four, zero against. Explanation please. Commissioner Mason.
Thank you. I think, as we all know, our Sheriff's Department personnel is kind of spread out. We have officers everywhere, including some that are still in the historic courthouse. This is property that's being vacated, and has previously been used for law enforcement purposes. That's available for rent for some of our officers to have offices.
I have a question or comment from Commissioner Bill Petty.
Yeah, I'm just curious about Section 3 of the term of the sublease. It looks like if the agreement between Mary Pittman Anderson and the subless are, as provided in their lease agreement and/or extension agreement, this sublease shall likewise terminate. So if, when I'm, if I'm understanding this correctly, if the original owner and the original lesser part ways, then it could be that we won't have a lease in that property. And if that's the case, I think it'd be a good idea to take, to change that. Maybe I'm misreading, I don't know, but this, this seems like to me.
Mr. Chairman, let me see if I can give you a little bit of explanation on that. What you have before you is a sublease. So basically, what we're doing is leasing it from the tenant, and we're not leasing the whole facility, we're just leasing an office space, so only part of what they're now using. So it's a sublease agreement. So it's conditioned on the lease agreement remaining effective. Okay? So if that doesn't become effective anymore, the sublease doesn't become effective anymore. Does not mean we cannot discuss negotiating with the owner to keep it. It's just saying that the lease agreement is being terminated.
Okay, just wanted to make sure we have protection on that.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed or no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record, record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-three yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. And we do have late filed Resolution 12524, Resolution to Approve the Conveyance of a Roll-Off Truck to DeKalb County, Tennessee, and Authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to Execute All Documentation Needed to Complete the Conveyance. Proper motion made by Commissioner Paul Webb and seconded by Commissioner Lisa Hayes. The Solid Waste Board was four in favor, zero against. Explanation please. Commissioner Webb?
You might have seen this before. We approved selling this to Humphreys County, favor the elected not to proceed with the purchase, but DeKalb County is willing to use it for the same purpose.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed or no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-three yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. That's the final resolution. As always, I want to thank the sheriff's deputies for being here and their presence tonight, all the department heads for staying late. If there are no other items, and it may be one, hang on.
Don't forget the email to you.
Oh, yes. And just as a reminder, each of you, if you will please, within the next seven days, email your preference for the budget meeting in June. Again, that preference has to be on the 20th. So the preference we're asking from you guys is whether you would rather meet at 9:00 AM or at 6:00 PM. And if you'll send that to myself and copy Diane Giddens, we would both appreciate it. Any other items to come before this commission?
Move to adjourn.
We are adjourned.